When prompted, enter the meeting ID nine three four one six five one zero eight one zero. And then you'll have to enter the pound sign twice. They'll they'll tell you what to do at that point. So I uh I acknowledge that this is kind of a clunky system. It's not not the ideal way to interface with the public, but this is what we've got for now. And thank you very much for your patience and for uh sticking with it while we while we go through this. So, the first order of business tonight on our agenda is to address our consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of April thirteenth twenty twenty, the warrants as circulated, and the liquor licenses. Um board, you've all you've had a chance to see these, you've had a chance to get in touch with Stuart about any questions you have on the warrants. Could I have a motion for conversation on the executive on the consent agenda, please? Second, thank you, Jeannie. Okay, any discussion on the consent agenda, minutes, warrants, liquor licenses? No? If not, I would ask uh board members to unmute themselves. And please, if you would like to approve this, please say aye, aye. You're opposed, please say so. Okay, it is unanimous. I forgot to mention at the beginning that if we have any votes that are not unanimous, um we will move to a roll call vote to to sort out the final numbers. Okay, thank you very much on the consent agenda. Stuart, I will um sign the copies that we have here and get them to you digitally.
Thank you very much.
The second order of business, and this is this is quite interesting and and fairly involved. And we have some some very important community members with us here tonight, uh is the SVHC Building Sale. Is the title of the um of the item and and Jason Morrissey, who is well known to just about everyone in Bennington, is here with us. And so Attorney Morrissey, would you like to take it out, take it from here?
Sure. Thank you, Don. Thank you for having us tonight. Also here from the hospital, you'll hear from them after my brief comments, or Tom D, the CEO, and Steve Majetic, who is at CF Hospital. And the reason we are here tonight is um because of the facility that we we commonly know in Bennington as the Centers for Living and Rehabilitation. Uh that's embedded on the hospital campus. There is a plan to sell that facility. And the presentation I'm going to briefly give should be, the content should be well known to the select board and to the town staff here on the call, but maybe not so well known to the community members that are watching this meeting. And that's the purpose of this presentation, to give a a public presentation to and a public hearing on this matter. So, to start and to give some context, to those of you who are watching the meeting, the property that we know as Hospital Hill or the hospital campus is not just one large singular piece of property. It's actually a a fabric made up of several different pieces of property. And to tell the story fully, we're gonna go back one hundred and one years to nineteen nineteen, when the Chandler family uh conveyed to the town of Bennington in trust, and that's what we're gonna talk about tonight, a piece of property that includes what those of us on the call and watching this meeting tonight know as the Centers for Living and Rehabilitation. Uh the earliest parcels that make up the fabric of the hospital campus, the the earliest individual parcels were typically donated to the town or conveyed to the town in trust so that the town is the legal owner of those parcels, but for the benefit of the operation of a hospital for the benefit of the community. So like all trusts, for those of you that are familiar with trusts, there are a couple hats that are being worn. One is the trustee, which is where the town of Bennington, it was the village of Bennington, and now the town of Bennington, uh that was originally the trustee of these parcels, but it was always done uh for the benefit of, at the time, the very recently built hospital that was underwritten by Henry Putnam. So, i- as we move forward, there's been other parcels around it, but we'll focus only on what we know as the Chandler parcel here tonight. And that these trusts had a requirement in the phrase, "A covenant that runs with the land" might be something that many people are familiar with, uh that the land had to be used, must be used for the delivery of healthcare services. And that the village and now the town also had a further restriction upon them. They could not convey the property to a third party, uh nor could they mortgage the property to raise funds for the hospital. So, of those uh conditions were fine for much of the first hundred years of the hospital. There were no issues with that, but as we all know, times change and Putnam Memorial Hospital is now not just Putnam Memorial Hospital, it's it's grown into the southwestern Vermont. Medical Center operated by the southwestern Vermont Healthcare Corporation, it's affiliated with Dartmouth. It's got many different types of facilities on the property, and the efficient operation of those facilities mandated uh starting about ten years ago, that some changes be made to the original trust agreement. Uh so now, to go back to about two thousand and ten, there were some members of the select board that met with some members of the then Board of Trustees at the hospital to talk about how the terms of the trust could and should be altered so that the hospital could operate in a twenty-first century environment that mandates more flexibility than it required in really twentieth century, when many of these parcels were donated to the town for the benefit of the operation of the hospital. As a result of the meetings that took place starting about ten years ago, the town through the select board and the hospital through its Board of Trustees, agreed to file what was known as a, in the law, as a CYPRES action. C Y space P R E S. And that is a legal procedure that's used to alter terms of trust agreements that are created for charitable purposes, which in this case, the donation of the land to the town for the operation of a healthcare facility certainly fits that. But when the original terms have become either infat- infatible or wasteful, uh this is a legal procedure uh through the public court system in Vermont, that can be enacted to alter the terms of the trust. The concern some of the public may have when they hear this and should know is that the public is represented in any type of action like this through the state attorney general's office that is a part of the action. So, in two thousand and thirteen, the terms of the trust were altered uh such that it is now possible for the town as the legal owner and SVHC as the beneficiary of uh the legal ownership to convey property rights in these parcels, but only if the select board approved it, and only if the conveyance included covenants that run with the land mandating the property, and I'm gonna quote this, "would be used exclusively for the delivery of healthcare services for the benefit of the community." That quote comes directly out of the twenty thirteen court order that needs to be included in any such conveyance such as the one uh the select board is considering tonight. So that was in twenty thirteen, and in the last seven years, I don't believe there has been a reason or an opportunity to utilize uh this power that the town and the hospital now have, but today, there is a there is a possibility and an opportunity for the hospital to convey the Centers for Living and Rehabilitation to a third party, which in a moment, I'm gonna turn this over to Tom D and Steve Majetic that have a presentation on the details and more of the nuts and bolts of the the business side of this deal. But my presentation is just meant to give a a small primer to the to the public as to why it is legally feasible and we are legally able to to do this. So the the goal is here for the the town to convey legal ownership of the property to a third party, uh including certain easements for ingress to egress to and from the facility over other parcels owned by the town for the benefit of the hospital. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is to obviously ask the select board for permission to go ahead with this transaction. We're happy to answer any questions the public may have on this. Whether, you know, of any nature that they care to ask. And at this time, I will leave it to Tom D and Steve Majetic to give the presentation to the select board and uh that provides more specifics to the board as to why this is a good opportunity for the hospital and a good thing for the town of Benning.
Thank you, Jason. Hopefully, Don, you can hear me okay. Okay, so so good evening, and thank you for the invitation to be here tonight. So as Jason said, um the hospital has been working pretty diligently over the last Medicare Chief Financial Officer, of looking at our our long-term care facility and making some structural changes to in terms of ownership. And I I have a short presentation, and certainly will answer any questions. So Don, will you be able to work to um show the the pages as we go up?
I will. Let me get this up. Whoops, I'm sorry. I have it on the wrong page here.
So how about, okay, so that's just an overview of the external um features of um CLR, which is a licensed hundred and thirty-bed nursing home, skilled nursing facility in Vermont. It's one of the larger ones in the state. Next page, I'm done. So this is a, this is an article from the New York Times that appeared back about a year or so ago. This is, I I will note, this is pre-pre COVID, when things were a little more stable. Things have certainly gotten much more unstable since the COVID pandemic has hit us. And the headlines here kind of states the problem that nursing homes across the country are really under distress. Uh many of them are losing money. Um numerous nursing homes somewhere in the area of two to three hundred have closed down. It's it's a very challenging industry to be in. It's it's very, it's different than hospitals. You know, sometimes people confuse it, but the nursing home um business is a very different model than a hospital. We've been operating CLR for probably thirty-plus years. And um it's a, it's a, I mean, I, we're we're proud of CLR. It's a, it's a terrific facility. We we provide, I think, high-quality care. Uh the challenge has been typically financial. And the the reimbursement for nursing homes across the country is is not high. And um the rate of increase has been pretty flat. And it's 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 caused many problems for nursing homes across the country, and we're not immune to that. If you look at the nursing homes, they suffer from work workforce shortages. Many of the nursing homes are aged facilities that had not been renovated for for a number of years. And it's a, it's a difficult business with a high level of regulatory oversight. You know, the next page, Don. This is a page, is an inter- an internal picture of CLR, or whatever, I mean, nursing units. Again, I think it's it's an attractive facility, but it hasn't been updated physically for the better part of 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 um twenty years. And we're not immune to the national trends. We we've um, you know, we we've suffered from some real challenges financially. Of the hospital, the, I'm sorry, the nursing home over the last five years has lost a substantial amount of money. That culminated last year in in two thousand and nineteen, where the nursing home lost over a million dollars. Uh many of our, many of our um costs are not reimbursable in the nursing home system, and we have challenges recruiting. Same challenges that many, many nursing homes throughout the country face. And we clearly have that challenge in terms of recruiting RNs and L N- LNA's nursing assistants. And we have not, despite the fact that we score well, we are rated a four, between a four and a five, on a five um star on a scale, and for Medicare, for the services we provide, so we're very proud of that. But uh we 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 s- we score well clinically, but we do not score well financially in terms of its operations. So our our Board of Trustees started to go through a a strategic planning process about a about a year and a half ago. And one of the things that came out of that plan was to develop um a strategy of creating strategic partnerships. And we're we're doing that in a number of areas. And many of you are aware of the fact that we're doing a strategic plan partnership with Dartmouth Hitchcock. They're a major partner. But we're also looking at sub-partnerships, and long-term care is one which we made a decision to develop. And look for a partner who would have the skill set and expertise and financial resources that we felt would be compatible with us, and we could end up making CLR an even stronger operation. I mean, again, clinically, we've been doing well, financially, we have not been. And we thought with the right partner, we could get that balance that allow us to do um very well clinically and also well financially. So we developed a request for proposal. We had an opportunity to speak to numerous um nursing home companies in in uh, I would say, in the northern New England region. Um the request for proposal probably at somewhere in the area of seven, seven or eight firms that we spoke to. We looked at both for-profit and non-for-profit nursing homes. Just because we thought that was that was the appropriate way. Unfortunately, not too many non-for-profits were interested, because most of them, to be honest, don't have the resources. Most of the resources tend to rest with the the for-profit firms. So on the next page, Don, we ended up um going forward and we found a relatively small firm out of the, out of the New Jersey and Pennsylvania marketplace. They're running four successful nursing homes right now. They're not looking to become a large national player. They're looking to be much more a regional um provider. They don't have any nursing homes, by the way, in the Vermont region. We'd be the first one, but they're interested in going up into the northern New England region. And one of the reasons why they're successful is they're able to create, well, there's a few things. One is that they're well-financed. They're they're they um um it's it's family-owned and they have a a good amount of resources. But they also develop a a series of advanced programs, niche services. And they create these services that help to to attract more business into a nursing home. So they they go beyond just the standard skilled nursing facility that most nursing homes provide. But they provide services such as neurocare and Jerry Sykes services and respite services and dialysis. So these are things that allow them to specialize, allow them to to create more business from a broader geographic region. And they also have the expertise, given the fact that that this is the sole business of what they do. I mean, we run, we run hospitals and we do a lot of different things. They run solely nursing homes. That's where their skill set and their focus is on. And they're able to develop economies of scale that allow them to be able to compete at a, on a, at a much more regional basis, or able to get better pricing, because that's all they're doing. Um a- as I mentioned, they're they're for-profit. They they tend to do well. Um financially, they have a a margin somewhere in the area of, I would say, five to six percent per year. Uh we easily strive to get a margin, if we can, two percent. But um again, I think they bring a a certain level of expertise, certainly in terms of billing and and documentation and supply chain. And things that were quite not there in terms of running a nursing home, that they were there, and that's all they're doing. Next page, Don. So uh what we're looking to do is to create a partnership where Alair would become the majority owner of the nursing home. We would be a minority owner, but we would, we would maintain interest in the nursing home for a period of time, at least five years. We wanna see, make sure that they're the right partner for uh partner for us. We would maintain quality oversight. We've been very proud of the nursing home that we we've ever run. Um Alair has done very well at their other nursing homes, so we don't expect this to be a problem. But we said, as we work together in partnership, let's, let's provide oversight from a quality standpoint as well as a financial um standpoint. Alair's track record is that when they come into our nursing home, they also um have a very high retention rate of their employ- of employees, about ninety-nine percent of their employees. And another reason why we're, we like working with Alair, they have a track record of developing partnerships with both for-profit and non-for-profit firms. So we think they know how it, how it is to work with a hospital. They have a very successful operation in um the Pennsylvania area with Dyson Medical Center, which is nationally known um academic medical center. And they're also willing to invest um in the facility, and that's something that we we're excited about. The hospital's doing many investments, um but we don't have enough enough capital to make all the investments we need to do. That's why having a a partner like Alair come in, who's willing to bring their own capital to the table and make investments, is is very attractive for us. And they also wanna work with regional partners, both in the home care and hospital side and other and other nursing homes. Next page, Donald. So we think this is a win-win. We think this is something that's gonna benefit the town, it's gonna benefit the hospital, and it's gonna benefit Alair. It allows us to uh to maintain a high-quality local nursing home here. Again, I don't, I'm, I I don't, I don't wanna sound the alarm, but there's nursing homes closing all over the country, and we don't wanna become another statistic. We think having a partner like Alair will help to reaffirm that we will be there for the long haul. Now, Alair, as a for-profit entity, will 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 pay property taxes, so that's a a positive for the town. And it's gonna help us to maintain our financial stability. The COVID crisis, and I'll be very upfront, has been a, it's been a very significant impact to our institution. And having the ability to have another partner to assist us in our operations on the, on the long-term care side will help to take some of the pressure off of the hospital so we can continue to invest in other services. So the, again, so we think this is a a win-win for everyone. Next page, Donald. So as as Jason, he reviewed with you the um the the deed of trust, which is um um s- which requires us to sell a a parcel of our land that CLR sits on to 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 Alair. And again, we are maintaining the to to the tenants of the of s- of the Superior Court Order. And this this property will be, this service will be maintained for the liv- delivery of healthcare, and long-term care is a critical piece of service that we think our our community needs to have, and we are very excited about continuing to be a partner in that service. It also allows the, um, we have a a a very nicely done trail system that was created on our property. We're we're taking a trail system, even though it's, it was originally near the CLR site. We took it out of the out of um this transaction, so that is maintained by the town and the hospital, separate from this transaction with um Alair. So again, the community asset is retained. Next page, um, Donald. And again, this is just an overview of our Superior Court Order. And um just, I just might, I wanna emphasize that the delivery of healthcare services is a, is a key paramount of what we're looking to do. And um there's nothing in this transaction that will change yet. As a matter of fact, I believe with the partnership with Alair, we will be adding new healthcare services that we've never done here in the past. So I think this is exciting, this is exciting opportunity for the hospital. I think it's a, it's a real opportunity for our community to have an even, an even better nursing home down the road. So, um, next page, Donald. Um, so just quickly, the next steps really is for us to go through a subdivision process, which if we get approval, I think we'll, we'll start that right away. We do expect that this transaction will take um anywhere from six to eight months normally um uh for the state to approve this. We're not sure what's gonna happen with the COVID um pandemic situation. It may slow things down, but we're hopeful, hopeful that um it will be, we'll stick somewhere in that um time period. Again, Steve Majetic, who's on the line, who's our chief financial officer, has been very involved in this transaction, um involved in negotiations. And we're certainly both here, able to answer any questions. Also, Trey Dobson is here tonight. And he, Trey, as many of you know, is our chief medical officer, so he can also respond to questions.
Um I'm going to interrupt you just for a minute, and uh I'm sorry to do this, but I'm gonna put up the uh call-in information again. If people have questions about this agenda item, you are welcome to call in at the number that's on the screen, six four six five five eight eight six five six, and enter the meeting ID nine three four one six five one zero eight one zero. Apologize that that meeting ID number changes every week, but that's a security feature. You um have to enter pound twice when you um are prompted to do so, and then you'll be brought into the meeting. And when I see you, I will, I'll bring you in and uh you can frame your question, frame your question at that point. So, uh, I'm gonna put this down now, and Tom, that's a good presentation. I I wanna thank you for your patience and coming to the board over a period of time. You gave us a lot of warning on this. We did meet in executive session early on about this process, which gave us a lot of time to look at some of this ahead of time. Both the legal aspects um and also just the community aspects. I was particularly appreciative of the fact that you were uh you were enthusiastic about continuing to make that trail system available to our community. You know, we put a lot of work into that and really very grateful for that. Another thing that meant a lot to me was that you have some kind of right of first refusal, so that if the um things don't work out in the first five or ten years, that the hospital would have a chance to kind of reverse directions on that. And um I understand that 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 also has been addressed, so.
That was, that was approved, yes.
We, uh, do you have any, uh, S- Stephen, do you have anything you'd like to add to the presentation that Tom made?
Uh, just, uh, you know, we're working with Alair. Uh, we're in the final stages. Um, you know, they're anxious, um to to get moving with their state approval. Um, and uh they've been, uh, we've been in contact through uh all of what's been going on over the past month. Um, and uh I'm happy to report that they um um, most of their facilities did pretty well in New Jersey and Pennsylvania, uh, related to the uh, the COVID nineteen, which was really um um, knowing where they, the facilities are, um, they, they, they seem like they've done a good job in the nursing homes. Nursing homes have taken a real um beating through this crisis, and um I was happy to hear um um the the good reports coming out of their uh facilities.
Great, thank you. I would like uh a caller to know that I I see you're in the waiting room here, and I will admit you in just a minute. Um, before I do that, I'd like to uh very briefly ask our, the town's attorney, Merrill Bent, to give a a brief overview of what you think we should be considering, and then I will um, I'll admit the caller and and let them ask their question, so.
Sure.
Merrill, go ahead, please.
Sure. So I I know we have um met before in executive session, so I'll do a little uh sort of background here, but the last time that we talked, one of the biggest concerns was um what rights of enforcement the town would have in the event that they were to approve this transaction. Um, and I know we had questions about a r- a right of first refusal in addition to the terms of the judgment order that's gonna be uh incorporated into the deed. And so I just wanna go, Jason, Jason has already um gone over the sort of background, legal background here, but I just wanna reiterate that the terms of the judgment order are going to be incorporated into the deed. They're gonna be part of the property description essentially. And it does provide the town with a right to enforce the covenants. And in particular, we're talking about the covenant that the property be used exclusively for the delivery of healthcare services for the benefit of the community, as Jason said. Um, and so that does apply to successors and interests, meaning subsequent purchasers of the property um and assignees of the property, uh including the entity that's acquiring the land in this transaction. Um, and so, the the town's rights for enforcement of enforcement include, well, they're specific to enforcement of the covenant restrictions. Um, and they allow the town to ensure that that property covenant covenant is adhered to. And they also give the town the right to seek damages for the cost of enforcement. So if somebody runs afoul of those restrictions in the future, and the town is forced to bring an action to right that wrong, I guess, um seek injunctive relief and make sure that they're adhering to the covenant, the town doesn't have to do that on its own. Um, it can seek to recoup the costs of enforcement. So the town has a fair amount of protection in that uh to ensure that the property is used for the intended purposes in the future. And those restrictions, um, they do run with the land in perpetuity. They, I think Jason also mentioned that, so they don't go away. Even if the right of first refusal is something that expires after a certain period of time, the provisions of that judgment order are in place forever until there is some other court overriding court decision, which I I'm not sure under what circumstances that would occur, but um, you know, the- overriding court decision, which I I'm not sure under what circumstances that would occur, but um, you know, the unless that happened, these restrictions are going to remain in place and um the town will have the will maintain its right to enforce them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Merrill, I might come back to you in a minute and ask you for sort of an official recommendation on on behalf of your firm, but um and board, I would normally go to uh board questions and comments at this point, but because it's a lot of work to dial in and go through all the faulty role of uh uh putting in the passcode and whatnot, I would like to admit this caller, I don't know who it is, but um we'll I'll admit the caller and let them ask their question or make their statement, if that's all right with the rest of the board, please raise your hand if if you're uh okay with that. Okay, thank you. So um, I caller, uh I have just uh entered you into the meeting and um uh you are not visible, but you are in the meeting and we can all hear you and are interested to hear what it is you have to say, but I would ask you first to please state your name clearly and slowly, so Nancy Lively can add it into the minutes and um to try to keep your comments uh under under three minutes if possible, but we'll see how that goes. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Lassoff. I'm a resident of Bennington. I just have a quick question for Tom D. I'm just wondering how this agreement with a layer and eventual sale, a gather of C L R will affect the property, the nursing home in Huzick Falls or Huzick, which I believe the hospital also owns. That's my question, and I'll hang up.
Thank you very much for your call.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Tom, are you able to handle that?
Yep, good question, Barbara. Um, so we, the SVHC health SVHC Healthcare does own two nursing homes, C L R and C N R, the Center for Nursing and Rehab over in Huzick Falls. And we are also in the transaction discussions with a layer for that nursing home too. And our expectation is that this two different processes, two different states, two different review and 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 decisions. But we're hopeful that that transaction will be approved also by the state of New York. And a layer will also uh in a very similar model, be be coming on board as a as a as a partner over in C and over in Huzick Falls and be running the C N R nursing home. And their goal is to be able to have both nursing homes work closely together, and we think that will make both nursing homes stronger, so so the strategic plan is that a layer would become the the operator of both C L R in Bennington and C N R over in Huzick Falls. We expect that the the C N R transaction will take longer, it could take up to an extra six months or a year to get approval through New York State, so it's just a longer process. But um, so that's our plan.
That's great. I um I hope that answers Barbara's question, and I'd like to um again, thank you, Barbara, for calling in and your patience with the call-in system. Good question, glad to have that answered. Um, so I'd like to move at this point to questions from the board. Uh, if you're willing, board, you all know how to raise your digital hands. Uh, I also am aware of the fact that we have had a chance to review this a couple of times in executive session, so I I I know that some of this uh is familiar to you, but I do see a couple of hands up, so I'm going to take them in order. We're we're going to start with Gene, then we're going to go to uh Bruce, and then we'll catch Jim. Go ahead, Gene. I'm going to unmute you, Gene, um, I think. Can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, can you hear me?
There you go, great.
Okay. All right, I have I'll be I have three questions. I'll give you all of them at the same time. Um will, because this is a a for-profit company, will the demographic of the residents need to change? Will the new owner continue to run the inpatient rehab portion of the facility? And I'm assuming the transition will be pretty seamless, you know, no one's going to have to move out. Um, it will be just a very seamless process. I would just like some reassurance of the of that.
O- okay, thanks, Gene. I'll I'll take your one each one. So the demographics, um really the demographics are the demographics of our of our region. We have a very high Medicaid um population. Actually, over eighty percent of our of our residents are Medicaid. We expect that to change and not to change at all, Gene. Um, I'm we're hoping we'll have more Medicare patients. I mean, I think that's um subject to the type of services we provide. So I think um we may see more Medicare. We really don't expect to see more commercials. Uh, I mean, I think the commercial um percent's probably about six or seven percents at C L R. Steve would know that probably the exact number. But it really is primarily a Medicaid facility with Medicare being the secondary um payer. And um, you know, part of the, you know, one that you've talked about the services of rehabilitation. We expect the rehabilitation to expand. Rehabilitation is an area that we think there's a room for additional services to be provided. And as you as you provide more rehab services, we'll get more, we'll we'll get more Medicare patients. Medicare is is a major market for rehabilitation, so I we think that's going to be, again, a positive thing. Most hospitals, most nursing homes that do very well have a strong rehab service, and that's one which we think we can enhance. We have a we have a good team, we think we can go beyond that. And in in transition, I believe, will be seamless. Um, I don't think there'll be ma- major changes. Actually, what we did, Gene, is we contracted with a layer right now under a management arrangement, so they're actually helping they're helping to service, provide consultative services at both nursing homes right now. So we expect to be working with them for the next six, six months to a year during these approval processes, both in Vermont and New York. And we think that's going to help a lot in terms of making the handover much easier. So I think it's, you know, uh all good questions, but I think um ones which um we want to make this as easy as possible and not impact your residents as much as possible, and also not impact our employee. We want to make sure that we take care of the employees in these transitions. The longer they can work with with the layer team, I think it makes everyone feel more comfortable.
Thank you, Tom.
Gene, does that answer your questions?
Yeah.
Bruce, Bruce, you're next, but before you do, a caller has called in, and I know this is very unusual to kind of mi- mix and match a little bit, but the the caller's sitting there listening to some pretty awful M U Z A C. Uh, and so I wonder if we might let the caller come in and then we'll uh get back to board questions in order. Okay, thank you very much. Um, caller, I've just admitted you to the Bennington Select Board meeting and um you're, we are talking with the uh SVHC folks, and if you have a question for them, please uh give us your thoughts.
Uh, yes, good evening. My name is Sam Verschuna over Bennington, Vermont, and this is for Thomas D.
Hi.
Hi, um, with this pandemic out there, as you know, your E R was supposed to be upgraded. Will this E R upgrade be delayed because of this pandemic, or is this too premature to speak about this at this time?
Well, it's a it's a little premature. We have submitted our application to up u- upgrade the E R. Um, the state has slowed down their review process because of, you know, what's going on with the pandemic. We're hopefully, we're hopeful that it won't be slowed down too much. The E R is probably our our major strategic initiative that we're looking to do in terms of services. So it's still a very high priority, but it it may get slowed down a little bit. We're we were hopeful that um the project could be approved by the end of two thousand and twenty. It may slip into two thousand and twenty-one, just given the the timing of what's going on with the state.
So we're looking at completion possibly in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, and?
Uh, no, sooner than that. And Steve, I'll let me let you jump in, because I know you were working on on a timetable for the approval of that.
Yeah, so with um, as Tom mentioned, um if we get delayed a couple of months, uh it's it's more like uh end of twenty-two with the delay, um to twenty-three, uh beginning of twenty-three, that'd be completed.
And I'm quite sure with the uh upgrade of of the renovation, you're going to possibly have the E R operational, or is that going to be a tough thing to handle, to have the facility uh in working order as is being upgraded, or that's going to be a difficult path?
So the 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 plan was to do some do uh the expansion, the build-out, then get that half of of the um E R set ready to go, move patients in there, move services in there, and then renovate the existing space, and then open the whole thing up. Right, that makes sense?
Yes, it makes sense, and you folks do admirable work when you do that, just like the Cancer Unit. Um, thank you for doing what you're doing with Bennington and the surrounding area, and thank you for taking my question.
Thank you, Sam. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so I'd like to go back to board questions at this point, and um we're going to um go back to Bruce, I think.
Yes, thank you. My question actually is for either Stu or Merrill, I don't care. Who, what uh what is the motion um that would be most helpful? Is it an authorization to sign a purchase and sale agreement? Is that what we're looking for? Um, and if so, um at after Jim asked this question, I'm ready to make that motion if that's reasonable.
Well, Bruce, um, I I had jotted down what I thought should be the appropriate motion, which would be to approve the proposed conveyance of the C L R facility with the Eastman's conditions has been identified.
That sounds pretty much what I had written down, is somewhere in that, I think we need to just make sure that we have the, you know, including the the language from the, is it two thousand thirteen uh judgment order, is that? I can't remember the date, but.
Yeah, that's true, and but I think that runs with the deed, so that will be there.
You you could also just say, you know, with the conveyance to be, or with the transaction or the property to be conveyed with the terms in the
With the terms in that.
The deed draft that has already been provided, because we already have a draft deed.
Right, okay, yeah, that's right, you do, okay.
So that would be that would be fine um to do something along those lines.
And Merrill, would that be consistent with your recommendations of the town? I know I uh I promised to pin you down on that, but.
Yeah, no, I'm 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 happy to make a recommendation. I, from a legal perspective, I think the board can be comfortable that the restrictions that apply to the property are both well-defined and enforceable. So I think at this juncture, if the select board's otherwise satisfied with the proposal, and if the select board feels that you can answer the question of whether this particular transaction um is for the delivery of healthcare services for the benefit of the community in the affirmative, uh then I don't see any legal reason that the select board uh should be concerned with voting in the affirmative.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Bruce, did you get your question answered to to your satisfaction for now? Okay, I'm going to go to Jim and um Jim Carroll, you, I I'm sorry, Sarah Perrin's got her hand up, and then we'll go to Jim. Go ahead, Sarah.
I'm muted.
There we go, you're unmuted now, yeah?
Yes, um, so I have two questions, the rest have been answered already, thank you. Um, so I'm not sure if you know this, how, what percent of um direct care and administrative positions would be retained through L R? And also, I do have another one, in case any clients or family members are watching, and C L R staff or C L R patients, consumers, um could you offer any reassurance or tell them how this might affect your care?
Well, Sarah, on your first question, uh on terms of retention of of, I would say, staff employees, um, I mentioned earlier that's, and and this is something we, you know, we looked at very closely, and we looked at uh a layer's track record. And we also asked them, and their track record is the retention of about ninety-nine percent of the workforce. They're they're now looking to change the workforce. I mean, it's a challenge to recruit in this in this environment, in this industry. So that's one thing that they're not looking to do. Um, invariably, some people leave, I mean, that's, but but very, very, very few. So we're we're hopeful that um the retention rate will be very high, and that we'll continue to keep them part of our our healthcare family, even though they won't be, they'll be employees of a layer and not employees of SVHC, but but we'll stay very close to them. And um, in terms of the the residents, a layer does a very good job, I mean, in terms of reaching out to the residents, the residents' families. We we have been in correspondence, we've been, we've had a lot of meetings with the residents and their family members have talked about this. And again, we're we're hopeful this this can be very seamless. We're not expecting any major transition. It's going to take up to, it's anywhere from six months to a year to to occur. And uh we don't want to have surprises. We want to, you know, keep, you know, keep everyone informed as to what's going on. And we're hopeful that they can, a layer can add more services that we that we had not done over the years. So I I think, again, this will be something that will be a a win for our residents and our residents' family. And we're going to stay involved, because we're going to stay involved with the qual- quality oversight. A layer will be in the managing partner, but we're going to be very involved in terms of watching what's going on and being involved and 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 just being a, you know, a partner and a colleague with a layer. This is not something that we're looking to walk away from. This is on our campus, it's right next to our nursing home. Now, they've been there for many years, and we're going to continue to be working in very close relations with C L R. It's a critical service force, and uh we hope to be able to expand the the whole program there.
That's great. Does that answer your question, Sarah, for the most part? Good, okay. Uh, Jim, I you I see you have your uh digital hand up. What what's on your mind?
Um, I'm going to uh uh Mr. Morrissey's uh letter to the Select Board and item number ten that I'm a little unclear on, and um I'll read it a little bit. It says, "As a result of the court order that issued in two thousand thirteen, the terms of the various deeds were altered such that it is now possible for the town and SVHC as the legal and beneficial owners respectively to convey property rights in these parcels, but only if approved by the Select Board." I understand that. But when the sale is made, to whom do the, the um, to whom, wha- what what party does the sale go to?
Oh, Jim, good question. Right now, if if the question was asked, who is the legal owner of the property where C L R sits, the answer is not the hospital, the answer is the town of Benning. And that's what I mean, in case anybody was wondering, the town is the legal owner. But the hospital is the beneficiary of that ownership and the beneficiary of that trust, because it is it is used for healthcare purposes, and they're the beneficiary. So when the legal ownership is conveyed by the town to a third party, in this case, a layer, then the the town no longer is recognized as the legal owner. But the covenant, the legal term of the covenants that run with the land, meaning these are, these are rules that that stay with the property even though the legal ownership is changed. And the quote at the end of that section, "for the delivery of healthcare services for the benefit of the community," that language comes directly out of the two thousand thirteen order. And those are the covenants that run with the land. It's a double threshold there. It has to, the land has to continue to be used for the delivery of healthcare services, which I think we can all safely agree. The operation of a skilled care nursing home facility certainly falls under the umbrella of that term. And then, I don't have the the presentation in front of me, I think it was in presenting, I think it was slide number six in the presentation that Tom gave, listed a lot of really good reasons uh that I think it is, it is clear that the continued operation of that healthcare facility as a nursing home is clearly in the benefit and in the best interest of Bennington and all. That's that's, I I, does that answer your question, Jim, as to what that means, that the, how those covenants continue to run with the land? It's it's, even though the legal ownership of the land changes, the requirements of of what that can be used for stays with it. In a sense, to put it maybe a parallel conversation, in a sense, it's kind of like private zoning. Just because you buy a piece of property in Bennington doesn't mean you can, if you bought property in the industrial zone, doesn't mean you can turn around and put a house up on it. It's got to be used for the industrial purpose until that zoning has changed, perhaps at some point in the future. In this case, there are rules that, if we were in the land records, looking at the deeds that constitute the title of the ownership to the property in the look also at the court order, which is also part of the title of ownership to that property, we can see that just because the legal ownership changes, the allowed uses with that property cannot change.
Excellent, thank you, Jason, and uh, it's clear that uh, uh, at no point in time will a casino be built there.
Yeah, and that, that is my, that was, Jason, you know, we were originally talking to Tom Jacobs about this, and that was my original concern, that, that um, having a right of first refusal might be important, but attorney Ben and others, Tom Jacobs have, have convinced me that there are sufficient protections on this property that it would never, realistically, it would never be used for anything else, and that, in fact, this is a really important strategic business decision for the hospital. I think this entire board and probably this entire community in the last month has um really realized how thankful we are to have a strong healthcare system in our town, especially as we look at other hospitals around the state losing ground and potentially going out of business. We, we are all the more thankful for the fact that, that our hospital, our medical system has been taking very good care of itself uh, and has been minding the numbers as well. So uh, kudos to you, Tom, and to your whole team for not letting that slip. I know, I know you, you're not out of the woods and, and you're um, still have a lot, a lot of work to do, but we are very thankful to have you here, and if, if it's your recommendation that this is what's best for our community, and if our attorney uh feels that this is also uh, at, at least neutral or better for our community, um, I, I would look to the board for a, a motion on how we proceed on this. I see, Bruce, you have your hand up. Are you prepared to make a motion?
I think I am. Uh, and the motion would be to approve the sale of the pre- uh, property described to us as CLR to LR, is that, should we add the, I would, I get, I think, um, with all the appropriate and required languages from the two thousand thirteen uh order that are found in the draft deed shared with this board.
Merrill, may I ask you if that sounds like what you were expecting to hear?
Uh, yeah, I just, I think I would have to ask Jason to weigh in on the um, transferee name and whether that should be included or not.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah. It's, I think it's blank in the draft we have now.
Two, good, good, thank you, Merrill. I have two comments. Uh, in terms of the proper grantee, which is the person receiving the property, I, I don't, as any, as I'm sure you would find conceivable and, and perhaps other people familiar with transactions like this, that we find it conceivable, you can see where LR or any third party might form a separate entity to own that property and therefore the grantee clause would change. So I think if we kept that part of the the language of the motion a little bit looser in terms of the grantee, and that it was within the spirit of the proposed deed.
How about, how about LR or an affiliate form, an LR affiliate formed for the purpose of real estate holding?
Perfect, that, that. That sounds fine to me. Thank you, that makes much more sense to me. I was wondering how we were gonna phrase that.
So, Bruce, are you happy with the motion as restated?
Absolutely.
I have one other point, though, Merrill, to, to answer your question. I think it would also be appropriate to authorize, I don't know whether you're authorizing Don or Stu or somebody to have the authority to sign those documents.
Yeah, whoever, whoever the town wants to designate, I think it would be appropriate to do that authorization now as well, so that we make sure that we have a designated signer.
So I would, I would add to the motion that, that the select board also authorizes the town manager to sign documents consistent with this motion.
Right.
Good choice. He's much more accessible than I am.
Thank you, Donald.
Uh, thank you, thank you for that motion. So I'm just gonna pause briefly and ask Nancy Lively uh, who's on, if, if she caught that motion to her, her satisfaction. Nancy, if, if you have not understood that. Oh, you're all set? Okay, great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, so motion, motion, uh, do I have a second on this motion? Jean Connors has seconded that, Nancy. Um, so board, I'm gonna ask for a board discussion only. Uh, we have a motion, we have talked about this a bit. Is, is there any further conversation that you would like to have before we, before I call a vote on this? Okay, seeing none, I would ask all board members to unmute themselves, and um, I would ask you, if you are in favor of, of this motion as stated, please say aye.
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 If you're opposed, please say so. Any abstentions? It's unanimous. Um, so that, that has passed, and Tom and Jason and Stephen, thank you very much. And Merrill, too, thank you very much for coming uh, explaining this. I know it's complicated, but I think at the end of the day, we trust, uh, we trust that SVHC is doing what's best for our community and, and um, we are thankful to have you as a partner.
Thank you very much, Donald, and the, and the committee, we appreciate your support and we're excited about moving forward, and we'll keep you, we'll keep you appraised in how this goes.
That's great, thank you. Now, you folks are welcome to stay on this meeting if you like, but you're also welcome to go uh, have dinner with your loved ones, if you like.
I'd love to hear Dr. Dobson, so.
I was gonna say, Trey Dobson's gonna be on next to give us a little report on uh, the state of the hospital. If you'd like to hear him, you're welcome to do that. You're welcome to stand for any part of the meeting.
Donald, do you need me, do you need me for anything else?
Merrill, I don't think we do. Um, but, thank, thank you very much for joining us. Appreciate you uh, being here tonight.
Absolutely, good to see you all.
Good evening.
Donald, I'm gonna sign off as well.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
See you guys later, thank you.
Thank you.
So we now have uh, now practicing attorneys on with us, so that we can say all sorts of things if you'd like, but do remember that this is being filmed by Cat TV and aired, aired live, so we have to be a little bit careful. Um, the next item on our agenda, uh, I'm sorry, let me, let me pause just for a second. I know this is tedious for those of you that are on this call, but I would like to put up this call-in information again, so that if people need it, they can jot it down. Uh, we will be doing a COVID nineteen update in a moment. We'll hear from the hospital, we'll hear from the Department of Health, we'll hear from town staff. Um, and, and then if you would like to ask questions at the end of that, this is how you call in to ask those questions, six four six five five eight eight six five six. And then you enter the meeting ID nine three four one six five one zero eight one zero, and enter the pound sign twice when prompted. And uh, that will bring you into the holding area and we will uh, meet you to the meeting as soon as we're able. Okay, I'm gonna go back to the main screen here, and for the COVID nineteen update, we have a, a, a number of people with us. We're very, very thankful to have uh, such a good team, but Trey, we're gonna start out with you, if you're willing, and um, ask you to give us a little state of the hospital, state of the medical system. Uh, wh- where are we, what do we, what do we need to worry about, what do we need to do, and, and um, give us the rundown there, and then we'll look to Megan for a little uh, update from the Department of Health before we move on to town staff.
Absolutely, so am I coming through? It looks like I am. So first, uh, just on behalf of all the staff here in the hospital, um, we are so thankful for the community outreach we have received. It has been incredibly important and incredibly effective. So for those uh, individuals and groups out in the community, um, thank you, a- and we are all very appreciative. Um, the staff are, are quite resilient. Uh, you know, initially, um, there was the anxiety and concern of whether or not we would be able to take care of a massive amount of people flooding into the hospital, and it looks like that uh, is not gonna occur. Uh, we do know that we will receive uh, patients with a steady increase over time, but we feel confident in that. We've focused on making sure all the staff have the right equipment, which you read about in the media uh, frequently. We've, we've done uh, both, you know, standard conventional means to acquire more equipment, as well as some innovative um, activities that you may have, have read about. So we're very happy uh, in that regard, but we continue to pay attention daily to our staff, because, you know, an individual can go up and down in their responses to a crisis, and so we want to be uh, on top of that and making sure we're giving the support uh, that our staff needs. Um, I've said before and I'll continue to say that there is much humility in recognizing that uh, this virus is unpredictable, that we don't know a lot about it, because it's brand new. I will say, uh, despite some of the most recent stuff out of the media, we are learning. Um, remember, it's only been about three months, so we are learning, and I say we in medicine and in science, but there's another uncertainty that makes it difficult for planning, and that is how society is reacting. So that affects all of the modeling and all of the uh, um, predictive capabilities that, that we normally have and can put in place resources. So let me just talk about resuming uh, what we call elective or non-urgent patient encounters, because that's uh, really important for the community. Um, I want to start by saying the hospital remains an incredibly safe environment, and in fact, I certainly believe that it is as safe or more safe than most any public space, and that's because of all of the enhanced mechanisms we have uh, put in place to present transmission of, of this virus, as opposed to uh, again, other aspects in the community. Uh, we have leveraged telemedicine, uh, which has been incredibly effective. Uh, it's provided the care that some individuals have needed in their homes, and this practice will continue. But it is typically, it's an adjunct, um, it's not a replacement for in-person care, and unfortunately, people with urgent needs have avoided coming into their doctor, uh, and they've avoided the hospital out of fear, and we want to make it clear uh, to not avoid seeking care. Um, our emergency department is safe and ready to see patients, and our offices are as well, I'm gonna talk about that. Um, remember that we do have a governor's directive in place that says up until May fifteenth, um, elective cases should not occur, and by elective, we mean non-urgent studies that could be done now or could be done a month from now, and it makes no difference. So those cases are what the governor, uh, in our state and many states prohibit. Uh, urgent matters, we've been taking care of all along. If someone uh, needs to be seen, if they have a surgical need, uh, we've been taking care of those patients all along, and, and of course, we'll continue to do that. So um, the doc, the governor said that um, this lifting of restrictions will be gradual. I think the terms he uses is like turning a spigot on slowly. I feel pretty confident that elective cases and um, office visits in the health system will be one of the first things that, that he allows to uh, continue. So with that in mind, we've designed a phased approach to allow those things to come back quickly into our hospital and into our doctors' offices in the community, into our laboratory, uh, and into our radiology department. And this phased approach is being done in conjunction with the Department of Health, uh, with multiple hospitals uh, in the, in the state, actually all of the hospitals in the state, and regulatory bodies, uh, really doing a collaborative effort. Um, e- even all the way up to the federal level, where recommendations and guidelines have been put forth, and we're implementing all of them. And it is probable that the week of May eighteenth, we will be seeing uh, patients here that uh, just prior to that, we're, we were not allowed to see. So we um, will be scheduling visits in the offices and in our uh, operating rooms and in our laboratories and radiology, likely beginning next week to occur May eighteenth and beyond. And, and we're gonna do a, a phased approach. We're not gonna do it uh, too quickly, but we also know that there's pent-up demand, there are people that have been avoiding care, and we, we need to see them and take care. It will look different, uh, just as everything else, else in the community does. Um, our staff are wearing masks and protective face shields a one hundred percent of the time. Um, there will be social distancing measures that are, that are in place now that will continue, and I'll give an example of that. It may be that when you come to see your doctor, you wait in the parking lot rather than a waiting room, and you have a little buzzer, like you would have at a restaurant, and we buzz you in, something like that. Um. So uh, we, we remain in something that we call readiness mode, and we say this every day. And by that, we, we know that we're not gonna likely get this big surge and this peak that was talked about, uh, and also that was definitely experienced, uh, and continues to be experienced in certain urban areas. But we do know that a cluster, uh, an outbreak at a, at a care home or any other area where people are gathered, uh, an apartment complex even, could cause a lot of patients to need hospitalization. And if that occurs, um, we are ready for that with staffing, appropriate space. Um, and it may actually mean that we have to uh, once again curtail visits into the system that are non-urgent. And so we have plans in place to do that. Again, working with um, multiple agencies, uh, certainly uh, with Megan at the Department of Health, we've been uh, just superb in, in working together, and as we start to go out for contact tracing and increased testing of the virus, um, we are ready to make those changes. So I'll stop there and uh, and turn it over, and we can answer questions or have Megan speak.
I guess my preference would be to, uh, if you're willing to hang in there, Trey, would be to have Megan uh, speak, and then Ford, if you're happy with this, uh, perhaps we could ask questions of, of Megan and Trey before we go on to the staff, uh, so that they can log off and get on with their lives if, um, if that suits you. So, okay, Megan, why don't you give us a little present, uh, a little presentation, and then we'll um, we, we'll send questions to both you and to Trey together.
Excellent, all right, can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Excellent, all right, hi everyone, my name's Megan Harrington, I am the district director at the Bennington office for the Office of Local Health. Um, thanks so much for the invite tonight. Uh, I just wanted to give a brief, quick summary um, of what we're seeing in Bennington County and in terms of um, number of positive cases um, historically and, and what we've seen the last couple of weeks. Like to talk a little bit about contact tracing and testing, um, as well as um, some of our recovery data and some, um, just some notes on uh, if there's observations of non-compliance with some of the recommendations. So, um, I'll get started. Um, you know, in the last three months, uh, Bennington County has seen about forty cases of, of COVID. Um, in the last two weeks, we've had nine residents just positive. Um, so as we are seeing, you know, with those numbers in mind, and as we're hearing the governor and lifting up restrictions, um, there's four principles that are really kept in mind as far as making those decisions. Um, you know, in, in terms of our public health and, and we're, we want to see this, you know, virus continue, cases continue to increase. So those, those four guiding principles are, you know, a sustained reduction in cases, um, which we're just starting to see. We do see some bumps here and there statewide, but we are starting to see some, some decrease. Um, we have consistently a healthcare system that is able to respond, um, which Trey, uh, which makes a nice job of summaring where we are right now. Um, the state is able to test for all people who have symptoms, which we are continuing to see that uh, testing is taking place statewide. People do have access when they're working with their PCCs. Um, and that the state is also able to implement active monitoring of cases in contact. And that last part's becoming very apparent as more and more folks are asking about contact tracing and what that means in terms of continuing to see reductions in cases. So um, I should back up and just mention like the little Epi, uh, Health Surveillance One O One, uh, and that contact tracing has been part of uh, this outbreak response since the beginning. Um, it looked a little different as we were in certain, in certain stages. So if you'll recall at the beginning, um, there was a lot of focus on folks who had traveled internationally and were returning to the United States from places that were, were our hotspots. So they had South Korea in Lee, uh, China, and those folks, we asked actually self-report to the central office, and they worked with our Epi team uh, to go into this fourteen-day quarantine and isolation. That was really our first steps in contact tracing. Our next phase really was as we started to get positive cases. So uh, we're getting a report of a positive case via a lab. Our Epi team reaches out, they make a connection with that person, they find out where they've been, who they've been in touch with, and folks are contacted via that way. We reached a point in the last, uh, in during the response where the, the ability for our Epi team to make connection with every single person identified by every single positive case became overwhelming. And so a new strategy was put into place that folks who did, who tested positive and were able, we asked them to actually reach out to their network of people. were able, we asked them to actually reach out to their network of people, ask them to let them know their status as being COVID positive, and then make those recommendations that we were sharing, you know, very, very widely, that folks knew that they should be isolating. And around that very same time, you know, the stay-home, stay-safe measures were coming into play. And so now that we're kind of on the other side of this, uh contact tracing is now again in in the forefront, and it's looking a little different as people begin to um interact more socially, they're going back to work. And so really our same system of if someone tests positive and their contacts will be notified, um it it will continue to go forward. So we're in this funny unknown era though, where as people start to resume normal activities, will we see that bump in in positive cases? And at this point, we we don't know. Um, we can, we can anticipate it, we can get ready for it if that is the case. Um, but if we don't see that bump, then um our contact tracing team and our Epi team will will be aware. Um, we are notified of cases through uh positive lab results, and those can come from state labs, UVM's labs, commercial labs, um and those are considered a reportable disease just as pertussis or tuberculosis or any of those diseases are reported to our our central office team. When folks get that positive result, that triggers an initial contact investigation, and that's when we get all that great information from folks who have have tested positive. What we're really excited about is in the last two weeks, uh we've actually stood up a team at the state that's actually collecting recovery data, and they are reaching out to every single person who has tested positive, that's about eight hu- a little over eight hundred folks so far, and they're actually doing a a check-in with them. And at this call, they're asking about the duration of their symptoms, uh if they developed symptoms prior to their initial conversation with BDH. Um, some folks were contacted when they were presymptomatic, asymptomatic, um and then what we're finding at our follow-up calls is that people do report additional symptoms. So the quality of our data is is improving immensely with these follow-up calls. Um, and in addition to really um improving the quality of our Epi data, um we're also providing these what have become somewhat of wellness checks. Um, folks that have been through an experience and it has been somewhat traumatic for for some, and so the chance to connect with someone at BDH, talk about, you know, their experience, talk about their family members' experience, um and just connect with somebody, we have found that there's a a big part of um mental health check-in that's going alongside of collecting this really good data. And so, you know, we're able to talk about folks, um, you know, ending their isolation, next step that they can take to keep themselves healthy, other BDH resources, whether it's ATO Swiss or anything else that we can guide them towards. So at this point, um the recovery team has contacted a little over two hundred and fifty folks who tested positive, and that will continue to take place um as until we're at the end of this thing. Everyone who who has tested positive has tested positive will have an initial uh initial contact with BDH and then a and then a recovery call, um if they answer the phone. Sometimes folks don't answer the phone, we found that, and that's okay. They don't want to talk to us again. So um we're really excited about that, and hopefully we'll be sharing that recovery data out more widely as as we get more of it. Um, and yeah, I feel like that's that's a pretty good intro to contact tracing. Um, I'm happy to expand more. There's been other conversations about um increased testing and what that might look like. At this time, uh my understanding is these things change by the minute, um but we are still continuing to follow the the guidelines that were where people have, they're symptomatic, um they are in a convugal setting, they're a healthcare worker, um they have, um you know, they're hospitalized, and we'll continue to do that until we receive guidelines saying otherwise. And like I said, those things are changing by the minute, so um when they do change, so I'll be happy to provide that update too.
Lot going on. Uh, uh, board members, I'm gonna um, I'm gonna ask you if you have any questions for these folks before we go into the town staff's portion of this, because I I feel a little badly about keeping so many hospital and health people here late. But if um if you do have questions for either Trey or for Megan about what they've just presented or anything else, uh now would be a great time to hear from you. So I I see one hand up, I'm gonna take these in order, uh Jeanie, go ahead please, what's what's on your mind?
Hi, um thanks. Megan, I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit about resources available for individuals in the community right now?
Sure, sure, I'd be happy to do that, uh that sheet aside. So um one of, uh one of the uh biggest uh needs I feel like right now that's becoming very apparent in a lot of communities around Vermont uh is the need for food resources. And so a lot of the our organizations in town, um G-Vex, His Pantry, um Council on Aging have done a great job of um ramping up their operations to serve their folks in in a different way. So for example, Council on Aging has now offered grocery delivery for folks so that they don't have to go to the grocery store. Um, we've got the Southern Baptist Relief are delivering um lunches and hot dinners uh seven days a week. Uh, next week, Thursday, uh the Vermont Food Bank, the National Guard, and FEMA will be hosting a MRE distribution, and that's a Meals Ready to Eat. These are shelf-stable meals, I believe, uh every household will receive enough meals for for a full week. So that'll be taking place at the airport uh next week, Thursday. No, no form of ID, no, no, nothing needed, just drive-through, um they'll put a uh case of food in your trunk and you can be on your way. So no questions asked, anyone's welcome, uh it's a great resource there. Uh, another one is that I've been hearing about and thinking about, um, you know, social isolation, social distancing, um for folks who are experiencing a high degree of stress or anxiety about COVID and and where we're going. UCS has set up a warm line, um and this is actually available to any resident in Bennington County to call and speak with a trained professional, you know, about what they're feeling and 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 have that be available. So it's a great resource and, oh, my light just went out, uh it's a great resource for for anyone in the community. Uh, and lastly, um for folks who are facing any kind of um housing issues, housing, unstable housing situation, and that May fifteenth um is looming, where a lot of the safety nets that's been put in place for folks uh are going away. Um, there is a program through Brock called Coordinated Entry, and that is a service available for anyone to get into temporary housing, permanent housing, or to assist with uh anything that's to do with evictions or possible evictions, um they can help mediate with landlord situations as well. So thinking about housing, thinking about mental health and food, um those are just three of the the big resources that come to mind.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great, uh Jean, Jean Connor?
Okay, once again, I have a few questions. The first one's probably for you, Megan. Um, it occurred to me a few days ago about what are people doing who don't have access to a washer and dryer, because I'm assuming the laundromats are all closed? That's a question. Um, Trey, this is for you, is testing for COVID going on at our hospital? I haven't heard if it is or it isn't. Um, um, this is, I I am talking to my friends, you know, in my neighborhood, and we're all wondering what it's going to be like when we can go back to whatever our new normal is, and I'm I'm hoping that the hospital will hold our hands and tell us and lead us and give us advice like, okay, it's really okay to do X. Um, because I think we're all going to be really scared to re-enter whatever our new normal is, and I, we we have just this tremendous amount of trust in in the advice that the health department and our hospital will give us. So I will be looking for for some guidance on on what we should be doing, even even, and I know it's, it's our, it's ultimately our choice what we would want to do, but um I'd love to hear from the people that I trust the most, that it's okay to start going to a restaurant or whatever that is. Um, and the other thing, I I am very blessed and have not had a family member or haven't been sick or really know anyone who's been sick, but I'm wondering if the hospital, um I guess it's the wellness people would should consider some sort of a support group for people that have been through this? I can't imagine how traumatizing this would be for people um who have been in the hospital and have survived this this illness. Um, that's all, thank you.
That's a good list, why don't you, why don't you start off, Megan?
Sure, so I have a laundry services question mark, and I know I saw something, and I can't think of it off the top of my head. Um, I know Johnny Fuzz offers some services um for for households that might be facing issues with bedbugs and things like that. Um, I, and I shouldn't even, I'm not even sure, but I want to think that we've got so much good um outpouring of of support and um and generosity from our community. I I want to think that uh one of our laundry service businesses in town is available for for that service, I I don't off the top of my head, I apologize, but I'd like to find that out, so it's a good thing to ask, especially for folks who are isolating and and can't leave. Um, it might be a service available for from um uh Council on Aging, maybe something they offer, so I'll follow up and find out, should it just be throwing out?
Thank you, Megan. Before we um hop to Trey, if you have a chance, Megan, to look up that warm line number, it would be great to give that uh on air.
Sure, I've actually got it right here.
You may just need to explain what a warm line is a little bit when the time comes, but let's go to Trey first, and then uh we'll we'll get back to you on that when you're ready to um share that number with us, is that all right? Okay. So Trey, we've got a couple of questions for you, let's see, Jean, what were they? It was um testing and, you you got them written down? Okay, good.
Um, so first off on testing, I I hope the reason that you are unaware about testing is because you have a need to be tested, um that is, that is something. Um, I will say that we are doing testing seven days a week, we can accommodate uh well over twenty-five people per day, we haven't had to do that, so should the numbers get higher than that, then we are ready to expand those. Um, the way testing occurs is through your primary care provider, uh will simply just call our uh laboratory, the phone number is readily available to all the primary care providers, and in fact, to all the physicians and advanced practice providers, um it's available on our website. If you don't have a primary care provider, because a lot of people don't, and you become symptomatic, if you call the our COVID hotline, which again is right on the on the hospital's website, um we simply can can just get a test for you based on your conversation with one of our doctors. And it works very well, it's very fast. Um, in the beginning, we were short on supply, um there were some uncertainties, and we've gotten through all of those things, you know, most of the country's all the same, uh had the same problem. We've got good supplies right now, um uh you know, sometimes the supplies run out in regions, and so we can't predict that, but it looks uh pretty good right now, uh especially if people start coming out and being exposed and need to be tested. Um, we've increased resources for that, and then one more comment on that is the types of testing, so right now, we test symptomatic patients by doctor's orders, um and so that goes for anyone, we're not testing asymptomatic patients in most situations. That could change uh when patients are getting ready, for example, for an operation, uh they may be tested prior to the operation, uh that wouldn't necessarily prevent the operation, it would just help us know what's going on and and what type of recovery they may need. So we'll continue, Jean, to push that out, um we've put newspaper articles, which are on our website, we'll continue to push it, push out the fact that uh SCMC does testing, it's drive-up, and also if patients are in our emergency department or in the hospital, we you obviously do those tests uh as well. And as far as support groups, that's an excellent point, um certainly have seen that, not only for the patients but for the staff exposed to um lots of illness in multiple parts of the country. Um, UCS has been working hard to get its groups together through telemedicine, um that'll morph and change when uh restrictions are let up and people can maybe present in a large conference room a- at a socially uh appropriate distance and undergo some therapy and some just really just talking about it, and I think that's what you mean, talking about their experience and sharing it with others who've been through the same. So um we'll continue working on that and pushing that out as well.
That's great. Um. Jim, I see you have your hand up, we have a caller uh coming in, but go ahead and uh let's let's hear what you have to say, Jim, and then we'll take that call.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Megan um for her help early on and uh making sure that I was providing accurate information. We had a little hiccup.
You were a good one.
Yeah, but I want to thank you for that, and uh I I I followed assiduously your uh recommendations and uh um your advice. Secondly, with respect to uh testing through uh the Commissioner of uh Financial Regulations, anybody that wants to get te- tested or needs to get tested will not be billed for it, it will be covered by the state, and that needs to be made clear and plain to anybody who who needs to get um tested. There's no copay, nothing, just go and get it. Is that right, Megan?
That that is correct, and it's, I'm glad you brought it up. Um, while we've made a few of our our recovery calls, we have heard a few incidents of folks receiving bills um for these associated with that testing. Those are, those are not accurate, um they're a mistake, and so we've been encouraging folks to get in touch with their insurance companies and to 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 fix that, and know there should no be, they should be absolutely free. But we have, we have heard a couple reports from from our recovery data that people are seeing bills in error.
Very good, thank you.
And Jim, and and others, this is Trey, um that's absolutely right, we've tried to put that in our communication as well. Um, this is certainly one of these things that you cannot over-communicate, especially because early on, uh there were um issues with uh supplies and resources, you know, throughout the region, throughout Vermont for sure. Um, the one thing is I just want to be careful in the language, um it it is not correct to say that anybody wants who wants a test can come get one free of charge, and that is possible in the future, if testing uh changed and and the um sensitivity and specificity changed and there were new reasons, but right now, it's anyone that needs to be tested.
Right, and it it would have to come through either a health provider and or the health department. Is that correct?
That's right, yeah, working through a PPP, yeah.
Very good, thank you.
That's correct, yeah, thank you.
Trey, one question I have for you before we go to this caller, uh you know, there's been stuff on the news recently of questioning whether or not there's a lot of, the level of immunity that is uh passed on with this, and I know it's very breaking and and that nobody's sure yet, but are um among hospital employees, is anyone who has um been through it or uh not been through it, treated any differently, or right now, are are we treating everyone the same whether or not they've had um symptoms of this?
So um there are special, I I think I understand your question, there's special rules, we've had a few hospital employees who have um either tested positive for COVID-19 and been asymptomatic, or who've actually come down with symptoms, and they uh they go through a certain amount of time, uh home quarantine and treatment, and then they can return uh to being in the workforce. And I, where you're going with that is what we all want to know is when they come back, you know, how long, are are they immune, are they immune first off, and how long? We can say that that most, most viruses, um you do get some level of immunity, um and that's true. What's not known is how long. So there are viruses where you get a few weeks of immunity, and then there are viruses, you know, where you can get almost nearly lifelong. Um, we know that with SARS-1, uh we believe that was uh about up to three years, um but the reason you're hearing so much caution in the media is that there are a lot of variables at play, and if we acted without knowing that, we could put lots of people in jeopardy.
That's great, thank you very much for that. So I'm going to admit the caller, it's uh, he was on earlier, but um uh let's bring him in here. Um, caller, you are on, I'm gonna ask you to give your name again, and uh tell us what's on your mind, please.
Sure, it's Sam Mercino again, good evening, uh of Bennington, and I have a question pertaining, Megan, you mentioned about the warn line, if you could give us that phone number, that would be great. I mean, there are people out there that are insecure and have anxieties, um for for one question. Um, for for one question.
Absolutely. So that number is four, four, two, five, four, nine, one.
Okay.
Uh, yes.
Okay, oh, 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 yeah, that's U C S's number. Okay. My, my next question is, um, you know, the the homeless is 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 a major part of our community as well. How are they being handled with this COVID nineteen situation? Are they being checked on as well, or? Um, they're probably are isolated simply because they're outdoors and um distanced from people, but, you know, they are human beings too.
No, it's, it's a great question, and um the Economic Services Division has uh relaxed a lot of their. General Assistance Vouchers uh criteria, and so they thought uh homeless and people facing housing insecurity. Um, they are eligible for a special voucher program that houses them in hotels. And so right now, we have almost ninety individuals housed in hotels and motels across Bennington County. And so that they're able to um practice isolation. Um, they have services available to them. There's a number of groups. That are providing meals and transportation to these folks. Um, Economic Services, um, B C C H and. Uh, Pave are also part of, part of that response, and so um they're doing everything they can to make sure those folks. Are able to isolate and and stay safe and healthy.
Great answers to hear out there. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you for your call. So uh. Board, if you don't have any more questions for our um. Health Department and our hospital, I'd like to um, I don't see any hands up, so I'd like to. Invite you, Megan and and Trey and hospital folks to stay on if you like, but if you uh. Dinner's waiting, or if you have family waiting, or just can't stand being on Zoom for another minute, feel free to um. Feel free to get off the call. We, we are so thankful to have you here in our community, and we're so thankful to have you on tonight. Um, we know this is that we recognize, particularly Trey and um Megan. We recognize that this is a fast-evolving situation, and you don't have all the answers, and you can't have all the answers, but it really makes a difference to somebody like me. And I think probably many people in this community, to be able to hear it from people we know, from our neighbors, uh, from from people that are on the front line, so. Thanks again, and um we'll stay in close touch with you.
Great, thanks so much.
Dan and Stuart, I wonder if you'd like to give us a little update on the uh, the town uh COVID nineteen response at this point?
Uh, sure. Uh, we are now um spending principally a a large part of today trying to. Uh, get the new uh guidelines that were released last Friday out to our employees. Uh, they expand the uh allowed workforce from two to five. Uh, they expand to two persons in a truck, although we are maintaining a one person per vehicle. Uh, rule here for our employees. Um, and they do require a certain amount of training. Uh, that must be done by May fourth, done and documented, and has to do with the Boesha regulations regarding. Um, some of the uh. Uh, things involving uh infection prevention and things along those lines. And I, uh, Dan and and Larry and and Michelle worked and met this morning early on to develop. Uh, how we would get this word out to our employees and um, I I don't know, Dan, would you want to jump in and explain? Uh, the thought process that you went with, but uh, we've, 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 all employers face this same requirement now. And uh, it's uh, I think that the timeframe is somewhat daunting. Uh. Seems to me to be uh, it may be difficult for some employers. Uh, and employees to meet that requirement, but why don't you just talk, ju- jump in, Dan?
Uh, yeah, so um, we did, uh, we did work today to to put together recommendation, specific recommendations. And requirements to our employees and how to meet the new guidelines that the governor has that released on Friday. Um. As Stuart mentioned, the, one of the main things is getting the training that Boesha requires. We did, there is a link that you can do, use a website to do that. And self-certify, so we're hopeful that everyone can do that in a timely fashion. Um, we have a little, if there's folks that don't have access to computers. It will take a little bit more time to to do the, do it, the, the paper process, but uh, we do think that'll be, that'll be implemented by the end of the week as required. Another thing is all of our facilities, there's new requirements for facilities, which include closing break rooms and other common areas. So we have directed all of our department heads to to follow that recommendation so that folks don't, don't gather. We've already. We already limited gatherings to uh making sure that everybody was six feet apart, but now um, now those break rooms need to be completely closed, which is probably a good measure. Just to to make sure that folks aren't, aren't um getting too close uh in those types of facilities. The only thing that's required is in each facility, there needs to be a specific person designated. Uh, to ensure that all the health and safety measures that are required by the state are followed, and they have to be identified. Uh, and 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 um responsible for those type types of measures. So we've implemented all of that. Um, we are seeing some loosening, as Stuart mentioned, of requirements for our D P W and public buildings and grounds folks. So we do hope to ramp up slowly the work that we can do in those departments. Uh, over the, over the next, over the coming weeks. Um, and other than that, our facilities remain closed to the public. Um, but we are uh doing our best to to uh serve folks by phone and and by email and mail.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of moving pieces for you folks too. Um, there's somebody that's called in. I'm going to let this call in. And it, I'm expecting it's for you, Dan and Stuart, but uh, given how difficult it is to. It's a ten-second delay between what you see on cat TV and and between realities, so uh, we'll see what, what they have on their mind. So caller, if you've entered the uh Bennington Select Board's meeting, and I'd love to have you please state your name clearly for the minutes, and tell us what's on your mind, please.
Hi, it's Mike Bepho. Can you hear me all right?
We can, Mike. Thank you.
How you doing, Don?
Good, thanks. Thanks.
It was an informative meeting. I, I think you did well with it under the circumstances. Um, what I'm calling for is, as you know, an individual died this year under the bridge from exposure. Basically exposure. His name was Terry. He was a friend of mine. He was well liked. To a lot of people that knew him, and we must make sure that this doesn't happen to another individual again in our community, whether it's from the virus or. Exposure or whatever. And I want to know, is and will the Select Board. Take total grasp of this, this si- situation, and not just have a committee look at it. But the responsibility needs to lie with the Select Board to instruct the staff as to what to do so next winter, especially when the cold temperatures come. That this does not happen again.
Uh, thank you, Mike. I'm gonna just jump in and uh between Jeannie, Dan and Stuart, we can get a response on this, but I'm, I'm gonna say that it. I, I see it as, yes, the Select Board has told that to the staff, but the staff has also told that to the Select Board, so I believe that we're in partnership on this. Knowing that we need to have emergency housing, and yes, we are working towards it, but Jeannie, would you like to take the first stab at this? Uh, given your.
Yeah.
Work on this?
So the emergency housing group that Megan referenced is the same group that uh initially was formed. To look at how to provide either winter shelter or what's called overflow shelter. Um, there are a couple of communities that have um, have uh special additional shelters that can be set up. In um, in winter or in emergency situations where more, more housing is needed. We were at the point of having Rattleboro, um, Middlebury, hmm, and maybe Burlington. Come down and talk to us about how um, what uh, how they formulated their groups. Um, when the pandemic hit. Uh, so quickly, that group.
Uh-oh.
Oh?
Frozen up. I'm sorry, Monica, it's, it's hard for you to tell this, but Jeannie's signal has frozen up for some reason, and this is a. Technological glitch that we run into every once in a while with her, her system, so um.
Well, let me, let me make, let me make it easier, because I know this is a tough system to do. You know my point. I've talked to you, Jean, and 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 uh Bruce. Um, something has to be done. And I hope that it will. I know that you people will do it. I have complete confidence, but it doesn't need to be in a group thing. And talking from Burlington and all, uh, Rattleboro and all like that. We need to do it. If somebody tonight needed emergency care. They should be able to go to the police station, or somebody should go and help them get to the police station, and the police station would be able to handle it from there. And uh, take them to someplace for at least the night, then to give these other organizations an opportunity to serve that individual or those individuals. Because nobody wants to see anybody die again from exposure, and now with this virus, and as you watch the news, whether you agree with the president or not. Uh, this virus is not gonna go away at the snap of the fingers, so we may have to contend with this all next fall too, so it's, it's, it's quite a. Daunting task that everybody's gonna have to face across the country, but we have to be prepared for emergency things, and I, I know you people are up to the task.
Thank you, Mike. It's uh, it is something that we're absolutely passionate about getting done, and we're all, we all are very focused on this. I see Booth's.
And when the meetings get back to normal, which I hope they will, because it's a lot easier than this, obviously. Um, I will be back to address you and see how you guys are doing, and if you need any help that I can do, I would gladly do it. You know, I, I gladly lend a voice to phone calls or anything else, because like I said, Terry was, I've known him for years, and he was a great guy.
Thanks for the warning, Mike.
You're welcome sarcastic. You're welcome sarcastic, Jim.
Yeah.
It's a serious thing. This is a serious thing.
Glad you care about this, Mike, and we, we care about it too, so we'll.
Mike, you know how I feel about this.
Yeah.
All right, take care, Don.
All right, thanks for calling in. Uh, so I'm, I'm gonna.
If I could jump in here for a second?
Yeah.
And if, if somebody was in dire straits and they needed assistance, they can go to the police department, the police station. And the police will, will take action. That, that's been in place for quite some time, so that is out there. Uh, for people who are in need.
Well, and this emergency cold weather shelter thing is, it was a very, very specialized situation, but we, we, it sounds like it has everybody's attention and. Everybody's working on it. I'm sorry we lost Jeannie. She uh, either she timed out or her, her uh line crashed. I expect she'll be calling back in or. Finding some way to get back into the meeting, but for the time of being Nancy, I think we have to, Nancy Lively, I think we have to say that uh. Jeannie left the meeting about five minutes ago, not, not intentionally, I think.
Um. Okay, I'll refer then.
Thank you. I'll, I'll let you know if she, if she's able to get back in. Uh, so questions from the board on the uh staff's COVID update? I don't see anything in the waiting room at this point, so uh, thank you, Dan, and and thank you, Stuart, for what you're doing and. Um, for some reason, Jeannie's texting me saying she's locked out. I'm not quite sure why. Maybe she'll. Try, try calling in, Jeannie, if you get, if you're, if you're able to hear this. Uh, the next item on our agenda is to re-adopt the rules of procedure and conflict of interest policies. This is something that we do.
Don't forget the letter.
Oh, I thank you, Je- Jean, I did forget it, but I didn't actually forget it. Um, I think we have Jeannie coming back in. By phone here, hopefully. Uh, so. Yeah, while we're on COVID update, before we move off, thank you, thank you, Jean. Um, you had draft, you had mentioned at the last meeting. It would be nice to send a, a letter of uh deep appreciation to, in particular, the hospital, but then you expanded it a little bit. Uh, you and I think Jean maybe took a, Jeannie took a shot at drafting it, and I had a few suggestions. Which would be, would it be uh impeded of me to put them up on the screen? So that we all could see the um, the letter. Is that all right? Oh, Jeannie, hey.
We all have the letter. We all got it in our packet.
Okay, I, I'd like to put my suggestions up, if that's not, I, I happen to have control of the meeting, so I can do that, which you, you folks can't do, but. If, if you would be willing to indulge me in that, I'll, I'll go ahead and do that. Um, I like the letter very much, but I, I, I had a. Uh, couple of suggestions, which I don't know if um, very, very minor, but just to. Call out the fact that the hospital really does a lot for our community in a lot of different ways. Um, both what they do in the hospital, but also what they do in the community. When you think of the Healthy Homes Project that they've done and. Uh, the Putnam Block and and so many other um things that they've done within the community to try to improve health, felt like it would be worth. Mentioning those, so I added to your second paragraph, part of having an effective medical system is working with the community to keep people healthy. We applaud S V M C for the many things they do outside of the hospital to improve community health. Um. And then in your last paragraph, I just thought perhaps we should say, the Bennington Select Board encourages everybody who's able. To please consider supporting S V M C and other organizations who are doing exceptional work and in many cases risking their lives for us. So those are my suggestions, and if, I'm not sure if I can type directly into this document or not, but if other people have them, like. I think I could make uh real-time edits here and, and then send that to Nancy.
Sure, I don't, that's fine. There, e- everything you added is fine with me. Jeannie, how do you feel? Yeah, no, I like it. Thank you.
I would only add grocery, I would add grocery workers and uh convenience stores workers as well.
Well, we, we did cover food. Um, I, you know, I think the list could end up getting really, really long. I was, you know, trying to do broad. Um, broad categories.
Well, and this was meant to be a letter to the hospital, as I understand it, right? So this is a, a letter to the hos- largely to the hospital, acknowledging that there are many other people. That we're thankful to in this community, but this isn't meant to be a comprehensive letter of everybody to whom we owe thanks. Right, Jean?
Agreed, agreed.
Uh, Jim, if you want to, if you, I mean, we can write, we can write another letter. I, I'd like to focus this. For the most part, towards the hospital and the medical system as much as possible, though. They, they are really. You know, we, we said it tonight, but they are really, really working hard for us.
They are. They are, and they're, you know, it's unequivocal that they're putting their lives on the line, every nurse, doctor. Um, maintenance, individual.
Yeah.
You know, it cannot be underscored enough.
Donald?
Yeah.
A question. Uh, we are, I mean, I like the language and I like your additions. That's not a problem. I'm wondering, what are we, how are we planning to disseminate this? Obviously, we could just send this as a letter to S V M C, but I don't think that's really the intent of the language, so I'm assuming. We want a broader uh distribution probably to the banner and to other media.
That's what I'd like to see. I'd, I'd like to see uh, I'd like to see us send this to the banner and send a copy to the hospital, I think. Um.
And post it on the webs, our website, and I would say. Any other media that we can give it to, W A M, or what, what's the uh, W B T N?
Yeah, yeah.
Whoever.
We can work with Shannon, and that's, Stuart, you were saying?
Well, I, I was, yeah, I, I would, I was just jumping in to add that we could put it up on the web as well, uh, and our Facebook page.
Good.
Uh, and the other thing that, 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 I, I mean, my, I, I believe our neighbors, my wife and I. Are, are thinking we're crazy, but we're out there on the, on the front porch clapping and whistling at seven o'clock every night, and if you've seen some of the places on the news. Uh, apartment buildings in the urban areas are, are, people fill the balconies and the, and their porches. Uh, it's another way for the community to get together to say thank you to all the frontline workers, those that Jim mentioned as well. Um, it, it does, it, um, as I said, I think our neighbors are thinking there's something crazy going on on the end of Soul Street, but. We're out there at seven o'clock uh every night.
May Stu?
Yeah.
And uh fellow board members and the general public. Um, I've called my brother, who lives in New York City. And it's usually right around seven o'clock, and he holds his phone up to the outside of his apartment building. And people are pounding pots and pans, booting and howling, and to that end. You know, if there, there comes a time where we think that we might be able to express our appreciation to uh. Um, particularly the uh medical staff, nurses, doctors, um, a- and uh. Um, first responders. um, a- and, uh, uh, first responders and retail workers who have, you know, helped keep our community moving. If there's something, you know, we, we canceled, uh, Battle Day, but I wonder if there's something that we could do, you know, to express our appreciation? You know, maybe some sort of parade without, uh, people on the sidewalks, but I'm just throwing that idea out there because I think those people really need, um, or deserve is probably a better word, um, some sort of confirmation and affirmation of, uh, the sacrifice that they've made for us.
Uh, if I, if I may.
Thoughts, Jim?
If I may jump in there, Donald, that we, all that's been canceled is the Battle Day Parade. There is a committee meeting, uh, to find a way not only to, uh, perhaps, as Jim has said, uh, issue a big thank you to the, to everyone who's worked so hard, but also to commemorate the Battle Day. Uh, activities perhaps at the monument and elsewhere. Uh, the committee just met for the first time last Friday, so that there will be some sort of a celebration uh, on Battle Day here in Bennington.
That's great, and, um, so I, I do think, Jim, that, that, if I can put words in your mouth, Jean, I think that Jean's out there, that, that, and I, I believe the board agreed at the last meeting, it would be really great to get something out at least to the hospital and to the hospital workers at this point, which is the intention of this letter. And, um, and I like the creative thinking, Jim, and let's keep it up, keep, you know, keep working with town staff on, on how we might, how, how we might do that. But, but if we're going to send a letter as a board, uh, and it's, it's clunky, but we, it's a, it's a formality, we do need to have something in front of us. We do need to have a motion in a second and, and actually vote it, vote it in. So, um, with, with, unless there are any other suggestions for changes on this, I guess I'd look for a motion on that. Sarah's making a motion, uh, to approve the, uh, motion, do I have a second?
Oh, you can approve that?
Yep.
Second.
Thank you, Jean, and thank you again for your efforts and, and, uh, taking on drafting that. Uh, any other discussion?
Donald, will you send it to me, so I can send it to the banner with your edit? Just send me the edited one, just email it to me.
Sure, why don't you work with, uh, Stuart to get it on Town Letterhead? And, uh, we could get signature, we could get signature items on it.
Okay, but I can send it to the, I don't need to do that for the banner.
Maybe we'll get Stuart.
We'll bring that from here, we'll take.
We'll send it to the banner?
Yeah.
And I didn't know if you wanted to list our names or just put the Bennington Select Board. If you, if you'd rather list all of our names, that's fine too. Although we probably oughta ask Bill, Spelling.
I don't think we, uh, I don't think we can get signatures easily in this time either, why don't we?
No, I meant just in the banner letter, I, I meant in the banner letter.
Yeah, why don't we say it's from the Select Board?
Fine, that's fine.
Okay, from the Bennington Select Board. Okay, um, Sarah has her hand up, is, is that, uh, that's still up from, from? No, okay. All right, well then, I'm gonna ask you all board members to unmute yourselves here, and, um, I will ask you in, in just a minute, if, uh, when I see you all unmuted, all in favor of, of sending this letter of thanks to our medical center, please say aye.
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 opposed, opposed, okay, great, thank you very much. Um, Jean, I will get you that copy, and I will work with Stuart to get that, get that underway.
I don't need, I don't need a copy, if you're gonna take it, that's fine.
Go ahead, Sarah.
I just wanted to say, I, I like Jim's idea of sending a letter for essential workers, I think that's a great idea. Jim, if you, if this is an idea that the board's accepting of, Jim, if there, you wanna draft something, the board is, would be interested in doing that?
I'd be glad to.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, well, the process is the same, you know, we bring something before the board, and, um, why don't you work, why don't you two, uh, uh, Jim, why don't you work with someone and, and bring something to me, and then when, when it feels like it's baked, we'll, um, we'll bring it back to the board for consideration and approval.
Let's try it out with, uh, Sarah and me, just for, uh.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Let's see what we can throw together.
Okay, so I'm gonna look to the waiting room. I don't see anybody in the waiting room, so I'm, uh, sorry about this, gang, but I'm gonna put it up one more time, uh, just to make sure that we're as accessible as possible. If, uh, we will be having a, um, public comment section at, at, towards the end of this meeting, I know it's usually at seven thirty and it's eight o'clock now, so if we see your calls come in, we will probably take them, uh, when they come in. Um, but the number is six four six five five eight eight six five six, and the meeting ID is nine three four one six five one zero eight one zero. And, um, enter pound when prompted. So, the, uh, next item of business is the readoption of rules and procedures and conflict of interest policies. We go through this every year. Um, it is a, usually a fairly perfunctory process, but, um, we have at least one minor change that Jeannie pointed out that we should make. If there are other, um, if there are other minor changes to be made, then let's, um, bring them in now, please. Um, Jeannie, would you like to talk to, well, I'll, I'll, do you mind if I, uh, summarize your, what you've mentioned to me? So I think, uh, item number seven says, "At the beginning of each select board meeting, there shall be fifteen minutes," and I think we've realized now that, that we don't need that, um, that that requirement is only, makes it difficult for us. So what my suggestion would be is we change that to, "At each select board meeting, there shall be fifteen minutes afforded for." Uh, just drop the, um, the beginning, the three words, the beginning of. Um, when we get back to in-person meetings, I think it will behoove us and the community to put it at the front of the meeting, but, uh, but let's give ourselves the flexibility to have it at the end if it, if it makes sense, or have it in the middle if it makes sense to, to schedule it, um, where it works best for people. And again, the reason we're doing it at the end of this meeting is so that we have plenty of time to throw up on the screen, the call-in number, to make sure people realize how they can call in, um, when that time comes. Jean, I see that you have your hand up.
Yeah, um, I just, I didn't know if it would be just a clarification that we do require people to state their name if they're gonna make a public comment. It's not in there anywhere, I just thought maybe it could be, should be.
Yeah, could be. Um, that, that's kind of how we do it, but I, um, we could put it in here somewhere, I'd have to think a little bit. Do you have a suggestion?
No, I don't really care, and, and it's not a hill I'm willing to die on. If people disagree, it's not that big a deal. I just thought if we're laying out the rules of what you have to do to make a public comment, that is a requirement.
I think it's a requirement to act, uh, um, under the s- state law as well. The, e- names of every speaker have to be in the minutes. But, but I don't have a feeling one way or another. I think it's, people should know that they're gonna have to give their names.
People, people should know that, and, and I, I do believe it is the law, but, um, I'm not quite sure where to work it in here, Jean. Um.
You could put it, um, at number ten, speakers must be acknowledged by the chair before speaking and state their name.
Okay.
After they state their name, or something like that.
Sure.
It's like, right in the middle of number ten.
Yep, got it. Stuart, are you finding that?
Yes, I am.
Good man.
I have another question, it's not, you, it might not be appropriate for, for right now, but I have something else I wanna say.
About this, about, uh?
Not about that partic- about this document, not, but not that about, that particular issue.
Okay. Um, well, well, shoot, I think, you know, I'd like to approve this and move on, uh, to the extent that we can, but.
Okay.
What's, what's?
So the, the other issue, it's not in here at all, and I personally would love some guidance on how to respond to, let's just say, the press. Um, I feel like when the press calls me and they don't often call, um, I would like to know what you would like us to do. Should we defer to you? I, I'm always uncomfortable giving my personal opinion because I don't believe I should be speaking for the board. I'm speak, or, or if I'm going to speak, I need to preface what I say by saying, "This is my opinion only, I am not speaking for the board." Or should we say, "Call Donald," or "Call the Chair"? And I don't know if I should be in here?
You're entitled to speak for yourself, Jean.
I know I am, I don't, I'm uncomfortable doing so. I know I am. I don't feel like I should speak and make a statement on behalf of the board. I can make a statement on behalf of myself.
Don't make it, then don't make a statement on behalf of the board, speak for yourself.
Yeah.
Right.
So, so today, uh, this is, this is perhaps a longer conversation, and I would say we can have it, uh, at some other time, but I would say that, you know, we, the first place is always, "Have you called town staff?" You know, "Have you called our town manager?" Uh, because the town manager is closer to this than any of us are. Um, and usually they call both, but that, that, I would say that's really important stop. And the other piece is that I don't, I wouldn't wanna mute anybody, and anybody's allowed to smear, and uh, as long as you identify that you're speaking as a, as an individual and not for the board. I think that the chair, as the, as the, um, person who sets the agenda and as the person who is working closely with the vice chair to, to direct the what the board takes on, I think is perhaps a little bit more uniquely situated to, uh, offer some perspective on where the board is going, but not speak for the board. And I, I try, I try very carefully to not speak for the board. Um, but to talk about what the board process is going to be and what the board's looking.
I ju- uh, uh, I, I just wanna add one thing to Jean. You know, you're a duly elected representative of the people, they gave you, uh, their voice for you. And, uh, they, they, they put their faith in you.
Mm-hmm, great.
Thank you, I, I just, I don't feel like when I'm speaking or making a statement, I need to make it clear that I'm not speaking for the entire board, that it's my personal opinion.
Exactly.
That's really important, yep, it's really important, but you're.
I didn't know if it should be in here, in, in here, like, that's one of our policies and procedures of how we interact.
But this is a pol- this is a meeting policy or a procedure, not a general meeting with a, dealing with the press or dealing with the public. That's a different and broader, and maybe a different discussion, for me, anyway.
Yeah, I think, I think a little different discussion. We, we did at one point toss around some ideas about, um, the guidelines for how we deal with social media, and, you know, how we conduct ourselves outside of the meetings, and I think we decided not to go down that rabbit hole. But it's, it's a good thought, Jean, but if, if you don't mind, I'd like to put that conversation off a little bit. Um, kinda stick, the, the rules of, uh, board policies and procedures are, really have to do with how we conduct our meetings, and very importantly, that we all conduct, uh, ourselves without any conflict of interest, and you all will be required to sign this, uh, as we were last year. And so if you have any questions or any concerns about it, it's, it's fairly detailed. Um, but now would be the time to bring them up, and, and in the absence of that, we will, um, we'll work with Stuart to make sure that everybody agrees in some fashion to, um, to this conflict of interest policy.
Donald?
Go ahead.
I just have one comment about number seven again. Uh, and I note that there is nothing in number seven that says that a member of the select board can't respond to a, um, public comment. Um, though, I, I understand the, the open meeting laws and the need for things to be on the agenda. Is it my understanding that you're going to allow, as the chair, um, questions for clarification only, and if that's the case, I don't think we need to put it in there, and I don't, I don't, I feel comfortable with your assurance that that's gonna be allowed.
Yes, thank you, and we have discussed this, Bruce, we'll, we're, I'm gonna.
I don't think it needs to be in the document, I just.
No, yeah, I, I think that chairs discretion, but I, but I understand your point and I understand.
Direct the, the comment in the right place, that would be helpful.
The perspective of clarifying questions will be allowed, I think, uh, going forward, and also the, uh, you know, if people have factual questions that they would like to ask of our town manager, what date is this, or what time is this, or something like that, not a gotcha question that he doesn't have the information to answer, but just something that they want an answer for, uh, we'll, we'll try to allow that too, but, um, as always, and as I said in my op-ed piece a while ago, if you really truly want an answer, instead of just, um, you know, a, an appearance, uh, the, the best way to do this is to call the town manager ahead of time and ask him whatever you wanna know, because that way the town manager has the opportunity to get the, the backup documents, or the exact numbers, or whatever it is you want, um, and get that to you, so that, that should be everybody's first stop. Okay. In the absence of any other suggestions on this, I would, um, besides the two changes, deleting the beginning of and adding, uh, and state their name, um, I would look for a motion to approve the board policies and rules and procedures and the conflict of interest policy.
I'm gonna move. Second.
Thank you, Jim, thank you, Bruce. Um, any further conversation? Any other discussion? If not, I guess I would ask you all to unmute yourselves. And before we take a vote, I'm going to, uh, see Sarah has her hand up, I, I'm sorry, Sarah, I missed that before, what's on your mind?
Um, I would like to revisit what Jean mentioned at some point.
Okay.
I, I think that's an informed point that she brought up.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Contact with the press, that's, that's, that, uh, that sort of ex- external contact, we can do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it is unanimous, so we are going to move on. Thank you very much, Stuart, it's on you to make these slight changes and circulate the corrected policy.
We'll do that.
We have one caller in the waiting room, uh, it's, uh, Sam Restino again, so I am, I am gonna let him in, but, um, Sam, I'm, before I let, as I let you in, Sam, I'm gonna ask you to be very brief here, we're trying to get this meeting, um, kind of wrapped up, so, uh, tell us what's on your mind.
Yeah, yes, sir, I'll be very brief, um. Uh, my concern is, uh, what happened in the last few weeks of April at Tractor Supply with, uh, State, uh, and, uh, Seafood Direct, um, in my humblest opinion, uh, they got underneath the door with permits, including town and state. Uh, in my humblest opinion, it wasn't fair to have these people come from Richmond, Virginia without knowing their character, especially with the pandemic upon us. And even the fact that, uh, they were staying at a B and B in Woodford, Vermont, which is against, uh, stay at, uh, when you stay in place. So I think that was very unfair to have this happen in, in our fair town of Bennington, despite the fact that the farmers' markets were, were shut down, and local businesses and restaurants are, are constantly fighting about, um, you know, you know, curbside service. So, um, I didn't, I'm, I didn't feel comfortable about that situation.
Okay, no, thank you, I don't know too much about it, but, um, thanks for your call.
The friend selling, selling, selling meat and everything, and I don't think it was, uh, uh, a fact right. Who knows of the situation, because I guess permits were administered in the beginning of March when the pandemic was upon us, um, to, to do that, so that's my statement out there. Thank you for doing, what you're doing tonight, continue on with your meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Dan or Stuart, would you like to, either one of you like to respond briefly to that?
Dan, why don't you take it?
Um, the, that particular vendor has a, uh, duly, uh, authorized vendor's permit, they're selling food which is allowed to be done under the state's, uh, laws or this, the governor's orders, so we, we see no issue with them oper- continuing to operate, it's the same thing as a grocery store selling meat, so uh, there's no reason that we could have legally suspended their vendor's license that they appropriately received.
They're also, they also have a health department, uh, as well, isn't that correct, Dan?
Yeah, they have the insurances and the, uh, the health inspect- they have everything they need to get a vendor's license. And they did in fact get one.
Okay, thank you, listen, uh, I'm going to move us, um, into the item number, uh, five, which is the manager's report, Stuart, and, um, ask you to, I know we've, we've called on you several times tonight, but ask you to give us a a little, um, summary of what you got going on here.
Well, I, 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 there's not a lot of activity, uh, other than the, uh, the PFOA contracts are moving forward. These are the contractors that are, they're, uh, providing municipal water to, uh, our citizens, uh, those with contaminated wells. Um, not much else really happening, uh, because of the COVID situation, everything seems to be, uh, kind of on a standstill. Uh, I will mention that, uh, at the last meeting, we talked a little bit about a rate increase for the transfer station, uh, cuz- Uh, Casella has agreed to put that request on hold until July one. Uh, so we'll be bringing that back to you at some point in the future. And uh, for my folks in the water department, uh, hydrant flushing starts tomorrow. And we'll run over the next two weeks as they move their way through the community. Uh, this, this is a uh, necessary evil, so to speak. Uh, we must flush the lines uh, so many times a year. And uh, this is something that uh, an individual in a truck, they stay very far apart, but they have to work their way through the system. Uh, uh, making sure that they don't create any problems for us with the way they, they operate. So there's stakes, experience and um, education, uh, but they are starting tomorrow. And that's all I'm gonna do, Donald. It's, it's getting late and uh, we all have family and friends we might want to see.
For uh, things have been postponed and we're working to work through things, yep, so. Um, we do have a caller calling in, Stuart and Dan, so I am going to just ask you to stay flexible here. Uh, hang on just a second, please. Good evening, caller. You've, uh, you're in the Bennington Select Board Meeting. Please state your name and um, let us know what's on your mind.
Hi, this is Nancy White calling. And I'm concerned because I learned at the end of last week. That despite the fact that the rec center has been closed since, I believe, mid-March. Uh, the town of Bennington still sent the Y a check for twelve thousand dollars for this month. Now, it's nobody's fault that the rec center is closed, but why would the YMCA expect the taxpayers to pay them? When the Y isn't able to fill their con- fulfill their contract? And I emailed Stuart and he replied that the employees are continuing to work on programming this summer. Well, that's part of their regular job when the rec center is open, so I would ask the select board to tell the taxpayers why we should be paying this amount.
Okay. Thank you for your call. Uh, Nancy, I'm sorry it's so difficult to uh, dial in, but I'm glad you were able to figure this system out. I'm, I'm going to put you uh, back in the waiting room at this point, Nancy, okay?
Okay, will I be able to come back on if I have a follow-up question?
Uh, no, give us all your questions at once, please.
Okay. I was also surprised to learn that the Y gave their three full-time employees the option. Of either going on unemployment or continuing to work. Um, so right now, we paid for six weeks, I believe, that the rec center was closed. And I really think with so many people in Bennington struggling, except, especially people out of work. Um, I, I don't think we should be paying that amount this month, and I'm concerned that you're going to also pay it for next month. So I'm interested to hear your responses. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for calling. Um, Stuart, uh, you and I have talked a, a bit about this. And of course, we wanna have an, a recreational infrastructure in place for the time as soon as the restrictions are lifted. Uh, but would you like to give us your perspective on this, please?
Sure. Um, I mean, if, if in fact, uh, the, and we did the same thing, frankly. We, we allowed our employees to take time off to stay home if they were concerned about working uh, during this uh, pandemic. Uh, so, and I think the Y has done that uh, probably nationwide with most of their employees. But, you know, there is planning that is going on uh, at the Y. Uh, they, they hope to be able to provide the summer camp opportunities and, and other programming opportunities. As soon as we can open the rec center. Uh, and frankly, the memory and understanding is an agreement. It's a contract. Uh, and we uh, always meet our contract. So we will, we will continue to pay them. Uh, and hopefully, the May fifteenth or so, the governor will be able to allow some of our facilities to reopen. And they'll be ready for us. That is, the Y will be ready for us. And when, and Donald, I should note that even if, if the Y was not there. Uh, and our, and that facility was closed, just as our senior center is closed. Uh, the senior center director is continuing to work uh, at the facility. Uh, preparation of programming and everything else. So if, even if these were our employees, we would be most likely paying them to continue the planning process. Even though the rec center is not open and available to the public.
Right, right. But it is a contract with the YMCA, not, not, and not our direct employees.
That's correct.
Can't say that too many times.
And, uh, Stu, a question for Stu. Uh, the unemployment benefits that people are getting are coming from the feds. It's not the state. Is that correct? Uh, it's, I believe it's federal dollars funneled through the states. Uh, but, you know, we, we don't have anybody uh, on unemployment. We didn't furlough any of our employees. Uh, we're, we're keeping, we're working split shifts and, and. Uh, keeping our employees engaged and involved in providing services to the community. So uh, I, I think uh, most employers uh, would do the same if they could. Uh, but yes, uh, uh, the federal, probably federal and state dollars, Jim, that are being paid out. One, uh, another question for you, Stu. Um, with respect to PPP, is uh, the town uh, eligible? Uh. The payroll pr- protection program?
No, we're not.
Nope, okay. Thanks, Dan. That was quick.
We've been looking, we looked hard at it, Jim. We thought we would be, but we might be, but we're not.
Okay. Well, I know, uh, I know from our frequent conversations, Dan, and, and Stuart. That uh, managing the staff and keeping everybody safe, but also not losing the ability to get what we need done. Done uh, as we begin to open up again is really critical. And that's a critical balance. I think you've done a good, a wonderful job of keeping people safe, keep, keeping um, not having everybody in the office all at once. So we don't get sick all at once. And uh, so far, it seems like you've really managed it very, very well. So, thank you for your efforts on that.
Thank you. Hey, uh, a question for Dan. Sorry, Donald. Um, with respect to the uh, PPP for uh, employers. Uh, if they file, they can get up to two point five uh, times the amount of money that they've spent. Can you delineate why that uh, municipalities, or for that matter, the town of Bennington would not be eligible?
It's because of the way the statute's written.
Well, that was quick.
Why don't you, why don't you two take that conversation offline? It's, it's a complicated uh, answer, Jim. It, it, I believe that Dan's answer is the right answer, but why don't you two have a conversation about it afterwards, if, if you don't mind? Um.
It, just a, just a quick answer. I mean, that's one of the reasons states and, and municipalities are so nervous about the CARES Act. They ha- they are not, there's not enough money in there to really make the state, the states and municipalities whole. And this is one of those things that, that, one of the reasons that it's not.
Right, right. One of the reasons why we're gonna be facing a hundred million dollar deficit in this state, yeah. So um, I'd like to uh, begin to wrap this up. In terms of upcoming agenda, I think I've said before, we're going to try to keep our agendas fairly light. Although tonight wasn't all, all that light at the end of the day, but it was important stuff. And thank you all for hanging in there. Um, Jeanie and I will not be doing a community update on Monday, the fourth. Because that evening, we will be doing a um, off-cycle meeting with the IACP. So we'll do a meeting somewhat like this. The IACP will be presenting their uh, their responses to questions. That came in from the community during the course of the past uh, week and, or two weeks. And they will um, be more or less giving us a short presentation. The board will have a chance to answer questions. And then we actually will open it up to the public. So using this complicated call-in system, which I again apologize for, but it's the best we can do right now. We will take questions and answers from the general public. Um, and I think we're gonna call that our sort of final meeting with IACP. As they deliver the, their, their work for our community. And the next steps for that will be not done on the fourth. So on the fourth, our board will again be receiving the report, asking questions, understanding it, you know, preparing to really dig into it. Uh, then during the course of the summer, we're going to settle in and we're going to look at their recommendations. And we're going to consider them uh, individually, but also collectively. And, and try to figure out what works and what we can afford and, and what we, what we can do, what's best for the community. Hopefully, there'll be lots of opportunity for community input. So again, next Monday night, four o'clock, IACP. Um, Cat TV, uh, and we'll, we'll give you call-in information as we have tonight as we go along.
It's four o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Did I say four? Six o'clock. Six o'clock, six.
Um, who, who on the team, um, the IACP, IACP team is gonna be on the call?
Dan, has that been nailed down?
Uh, they know that Dr. Lee will be there. They, they know that Megan Casanova will be there. And uh, Carl, I always forget his last name. I think it's Malton, the exec- the deputy director will also, is also likely to be there. The same folks that uh, that, that have been in there in the past, um, so.
Okay. So that's all I'm gonna say about upcoming agenda at this point. We're, again, our, our general theme is to try to keep it fairly light. Uh, while we're doing this somewhat clunky online system. But uh, next week, we will have the IACP meeting. No community update next week. Um, so let's, let's move into other business. Um, are there board members that have other things that they wanted to bring in front of this meeting? I see Jeanie shaking her head. No. Sarah, no. Bruce, no. Jean, no. Jim's got his hand up. All right, Jim, what you got? Jim, is your hand meant to be up?
You. Sorry, sorry about that. Um, I just wanted to uh, bring to the general public's uh, attention. Uh, development through the legislature. Uh, people have been having a great deal of difficulty. With uh, un- unemployment and uh, PU8 benefits. And I wanna provide them with some information that, that um, may be useful to them. I've been dealing with dozens of people who are just frustrated beyond belief that they filed over four weeks ago. And have gotten nothing. So I wanna provide um, this information uh, to them. If you'll um, email me at my official legislative email address. And it's jcarroll, C-A-R-R-O-L-L, at L-E-G dot state dot V-T dot U-S. Or call me at my personal phone number, eight oh two, seven, three, three, two, zero, six, one. You can text me as well, but there's some vital information that I need. And that is, in order for you to get into the, what the, the Speaker Johnson and the majority leader have developed. I need your first name, your last name, your phone number, the last four digits of your social security number. And an email address. And I can get it in to uh, the new legislative portal. So please, uh, follow those uh, those um, those directions and I'll do whatever I can to help you.
And don't forget to start with the Department of Labor too, as we, as we, pretty several times before.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That, that's where the problem is, is, has lied. They have been, you know, um, a, a, a year ago, on a weekly basis. Uh, unemployment claims were about thirty-two, thirty-three hundred um, uh, a week. Because Vermont had a two point four percent unemployment rate. And in less than two weeks, it's gone to over eighty thousand, and they are overwhelmed.
Yep, yep, yep. Well, it's been funny seeing Michael Harrington, Bennington's own Michael Harrington, struggling away up there. Feel for you, Mike. You're getting this message, Mike. Oh, boy, you poor guy.
It's awful.
Uh, well, uh, but yeah, all kidding aside, it is really a, really important thing. And I know the state is putting everything, putting everything they can into getting that through, but thank you for that, that PSA, Jim. And it's time to wrap this meeting up. Um, so I'm looking for a, uh, mo- we don't need the executive session tonight. I guess I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion for adjourn.
Okay, and it's been seconded by Sarah. Um, I guess I'd ask you all to unmute yourself, please, and, and I'm gonna ask you all in favor of adjourning. Please say aye.
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 And is there anybody that's opposed? No? All right. And I'm gonna say good night. Thank you, Bennington, for uh, hanging in there with us. Your uh, your good support about this. We'll, we'll uh, see many of you in the same fashion on Monday night when we talk about the police report. Thank you, Stuart. Thank you, Dan. Good night.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Cat TV, too.